One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Want to welcome our new member?
Yes.
Sonia Bailey. Welcome, welcome. An addition to our motley crew. So, we have a few things on the agenda. We need to sign.
Can I make a motion to sign the warrants?
Thank you.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
And as a matter of fact, while that's taking place, if I'm not being too forward, may I make a motion to sign the minutes from August 7?
And I'll second that.
As written, we should say.
As written. And the seconded as spoken.
All in favor?
And we'll finish off by making a motion to sign the minutes from the public hearing.
As written.
Second.
All in favor? All right. Oh, he has to go somewhere. Don't rush us, Dan. We have to think on this one.
Just getting easy stuff out of the way.
Okay.
Sign all these.
This is not the most exciting part of this job. But all business.
This is the current butter moment.
Picture here, the dedication's phone and return to Stockford Park. Yes. Huge thank you to Jessica Oldberry, Denise Rule, Rachel Rubio. You're all very similar in making that happen. And it was delivered early Monday morning.
And we need to plan. I would like to have a celebratory occasion with the town.
We need a few weeks to advertise it. I don't think it's going to be like later day or something like that. It would be Labor Day.
Yeah.
We could actually make it Labor Day itself because there's nothing on Labor Day than other festivals, Saturday and Sunday.
Yeah, we've been invaded by every pilot and we're all.
Why don't we do Labor Day?
Let's do Labor Day.
In the morning. Every day in the morning.
We love it. And you'll have to circumvent the high chief class.
What is that?
I don't know. Nine o'clock?
It's on Monday? Every day?
I think they do it every day.
I know a lot of people may or may not be here, but you know.
I'll let David Stockford know.
Do we have any other suggestions for what day it should be? Unlike Labor Day.
If that works, or if he has.
I mean, how many of us are going to be able to go Labor Day?
There's also the clam bake. It's August 31st. It's down at Stockford Park. So I don't know.
Maybe we should do that because we'd have all the clamers there. We'd have all the. Let's do it during. The clam bake's between 11:00 and 1:00. And if we did that, then there would be people there already. Because that would be really helpful.
Not knowing they were there for such a special occasion.
I know I personally will be in Windsor that day. So I won't.
August 31st. Thirty or the 31st.
The 31st. I think that would be better. So what exact, what time?
We'll do it at 11:00 just before or 11:00?
Maybe like 11:00, 11:10.
Okay, 10:30, 10, something like that.
Well, do it right at 11:00.
Right at 11:00.
At 11:00?
Yeah.
All right. And we'll tell John Moore that we're going to have a dedication. So if we could just, can we be there? Can people try to be there?
I would definitely be there.
Is that a Sunday?
It's Saturday.
A Saturday.
Oh, I won't be there.
It's a Saturday?
What?
She works me.
Yeah, but we're talking a five-minute dedication.
Just go zipping around the corner.
Can you just pull the truck right in there? Stop, get out, say yes.
Around 11:00, he's like, he's in charge.
That's okay. We'll let him walk. Rachel and I will go. But I need to make sure that I don't have a tour leading at that time.
Are we doing any food or any of that stuff?
Can I go look? I give her what she's scheduled.
They'll be doing clam bake.
Clam.
There we go, the clam bake.
I've got to check my schedule.
How about while she's gone, do you want to quickly switch to number five? So we can make that sort of announcement.
You can do one, also, that is.
Oh, well, sort of.
I would like to nominate Carol as chair and Dan as vice chair, as they have done so successfully.
I will second that.
In the past.
A dynamic duo.
A dynamic duo. Well, I guess I forgot my calendar.
Somebody has to call the votes. Rachel, you have to call the votes.
Let's pick up all those in favor.
There you go. Thank you, I guess.
Two abstaining. I need to abstain.
Well, we're not voting.
See, but I think.
Okay, Saturday.
You get the good stuff.
Saturday, 31st.
11:00.
11:00 is good because I'll be okay with that. I can even have 11:00. I'm putting it in here right now, 11:00 dedication.
Could they do Clam's Casino for us and stuff?
I'll show them.
We're doing Stockford Park at 11:00 on Saturday. As many selectmen as there would be really enough. And we'll have to write a little thing to speak about.
And the public is well.
Well, of course. And we'll tell Mr. Stockford. He'll be happy. And then we'll have plans.
And put it on the.
Yeah.
QWERTY TV.
On the QWERTY TV. Okay, well, we went through all that sometime. Choose, oh, we did that. Appointment papers. Oh, good.
All righty.
Okay, why don't we do the appointment papers after? Because that's a long signature process. And why don't we do the sign the warrant for the special town meeting now? We'll skip the appointments till the end.
Do you make a motion to sign the warrant for the special town meeting?
No, we need to see it first. Yes, we need to read it.
Can you pack it?
How many? You can make a motion to sign it, but nobody can talk about it. Make a motion in seconds. This is a new addition. And I don't know if any of you have read it. I have. So I will explain Article 1, of course, to elect the moderator. Article 2 is to see if the town registered voters will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $35,000. That will add to the $64,000 already appropriated from the sidewalk improvement capital fund to reimburse the state of Maine, a grand total of $99,000, actually. Because even though it was engineering bills, they reimbursed us. So that's pretty good. And then, so if that doesn't pass, then we go to see if the registered voters will vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $21,000 to continue with the sidewalk project. So we had to have both of them in there.
Has anybody asked them for an itemized bill?
That would be you, Jason. Would you like to ask?
Yes, I'll ask them. I'm not shy.
We have an itemized bill from the engineering. So some of this money, $29,500 was designated to engineering, and that has been itemized. $31,000 was for right-of-way, and the other 30 was for reviewing the proposals and all of that. And also this $5,000 charge for getting out of the right-of-ways that we now have gotten into. I don't know if that adds up to $99,000.
Not that, their street road.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's what we need for Article 3. Article 4 is, I think we will have Dana explain Article 4 since you posed it.
Well, only that I feel that the townspeople have already paid in their $12,000 appropriation for those kids to go, for Lubac kids to go to the recreation program. And throw in the fact that we have provided the facilities. I was hoping that we could do away with that scholarship deal that was approved at our last town meeting by presenting this article to the townspeople.
What if we just left it with sliding scale fees? For students, for children.
One objection I had is the requirement that they fill out a scholarship application. I am very much opposed to these people being required to go through these hoops when we have already paid the bill to school. We've paid $12,000 for these kids to go to the rec program. We should not be throwing hoops onto these parents. And what if they don't pass master? They're going to be challenged, I assume, if we have anything to do with a scholarship requirement for our Lubac kids.
This is getting stickier and stickier.
No, it's quite simple. I think the article was pretty well.
Well, no, that's fine. The other part of it is there was some squabbling about Lubac students as opposed to Treskett students as opposed to Edmunds students. And I think Dan and I were in agreement that it didn't make any difference.
I would almost agree with that, Rachel, except for how much Treskett money, how much Edmunds money do we have in that $12,000?
Excuse me, to my next point, is that I suggested to Renee, not Dave Esposito, and Nancy today that we ask the Edmunds, Treskett, and those people, says, those kids come to this, why aren't they kicking in some money? We did that at the library. Because Campobello and Treskett and Edmunds all use the library. And they willingly gave money. So I think that's a fair request.
Why wouldn't parents do that as part of whoever attends that's not in that revenue?
Why wouldn't what parent?
Are you thinking about going to?
I would go to Dean Preston, who is the head of the unorganized territories.
You think you're going to get money out of the county?
The county? No, no, no. There are discretionary funds, I think, within the unorganized territories that Dean has.
Well, I think the county commission is involved somewhere, I think.
I'm not sure.
I'm pretty sure they have to sign a warrant to walk us through the program. So I am saying Lubac parents have already paid for their kids to go to that program. They're the property tax. They should not have to pay anymore. I don't know about anybody else, only the Lubac kids, and that's what I'm talking about. And anybody else, as I said, that wants to go to the program that's not Lubac, they should pay, my little nephew, pay. I don't care whether I don't care about the rest of it.
Yeah, I just want to make this as fair as possible.
And that is my point.
And inclusive as possible. I don't like the idea of setting up these barriers between us and them.
Now, I don't see a barrier. The bills we paid, $12,000. The Treskett people, anybody else knows that we have already paid the bills that was given.
Some of those Treskett kids are essentially Lubac kids.
I agree, yeah, I agree. But Lubac taxpayers, they paid the bill for the Lubac kids. And there should not be hoops they have to go through in order for them to participate in that program.
I think it would be.
I actually had a parent tell me they wanted to send their kids to the program, but they couldn't afford it. Now, I know we got scholarships and all that work, but I'm pretty sure that maybe they didn't want to go disclose how much money they made every year. And they shouldn't have.
All right, I'm going to ask what I didn't ask Sonia. What we do is we usually go around and have another opinion. So you have time to say something, your feeling about this. See, what we're deciding on whether we put this article in, we're not deciding whether we agree with the article or disagree, is whether it has enough merit to be put on the warrant. It doesn't have to be on here. So it's the selectmen's prerogative to choose articles to go on for a warrant. So we need to have a vote to include Article 4. I believe Article 2 and 3 have kind of like have to be on there because, so this is really the discussion.
I can see Mr. Brown's point now, other than I could see it, you know, I understand now what he's talking about. As far as parents, maybe, Lubac kids, when it first started, we wanted Lubac kids to benefit from it. We didn't want to keep everybody else away. What we wanted was for them. And I agree with him. I think there's a lot of parents that don't like making out all that paperwork. Or even want their kids there, they don't. You know, they feel uncomfortable making out applications, and they don't know why they're going to end up. I can see his point.
Jason?
I guess my question would be, how many kids would this $12,000 fund?
That's my question.
What's the number? I mean, is it?
I don't know. Where that $12,000 came from?
Right.
I have no idea who would fund that.
You know what I'm saying, Dana? Is it 10 kids, 20 kids?
Yeah, as it's set up right now with your scholarships, I don't know how these guys can put a budget together because it's going to depend on how many kids show up. If 20 show up, they'll make a, and from one week to the next. I would expect that there's going to be quite a bit of paperwork in each hour.
Right. That's just my question.
Yeah, I agree with, I don't know the answer to that either. But I do know we've got $12,000 involved with it.
Right.
Dan?
From a town perspective, I don't think it's particularly my business to decide whether it goes on the warrant or not. My personal feeling is that I don't particularly care for it. But again, that's not my, it's warranted to be on the warrant for the town to decide.
So, you know, that's true. You can vote to have it put on the warrant to be revisited by the town.
Right.
But, and we don't have to make a decision. So I have one question. I, my only problem is, I'm with Jason, how many, I don't know. I would like to be able to say that all the children of Lubac are going to free, but I mean, that may be not.
Do we have an opinion maybe somewhere?
If you get 75 a week, you divide into 12,000, how many kids can that send? It can't send everybody.
I just did that. Comes out to $37,000 a week, times six weeks, is $390. I rounded it to $400. I divided it into 12,000, it's 30 kids.
That, yeah, 30 kids for no cost, right? So, I mean, maybe what that needed to say that.
Actually, you all, go ahead.
Can I just tell you?
Yes.
$12,000 is not going to fund 30 kids for six weeks. So final figures for the summer are not in yet, but as I have stated before, summer rec costs, on average, historically, $40,000 to $50,000 something thousand dollars. Enrollment, even this year, with all the other parts, is 50% or better Lubac kids. So thinking $12,000 is going to cover the cost of the Lubac kids is inaccurate. And the only other thing I will add is that in looking for grants, speaking about collaborative effort is important, talking about the community and beyond just the kids, because there's probably, and I could be wrong on these numbers, but maybe 20-something kids that are going to qualify to be between pre-K and 12 years old for summer camp in the Lubac school system. So.
What does that mean, pre-qualified?
Be the right age. You know what I mean? Summer rec is four-year-old to 12. So how many kids do Lubac?
We only have 20 children in Lubac that are 4 to 12?
I don't know what the numbers are for kids from pre-K.
Well, it's funded every year.
But I know, but you know, I don't think it's 50. I don't think it's, you know what I mean? Like, how many kids?
I was going to ask, where did the $75 come from?
That's the tuition for a week.
Um, because.
Well, that's, I'm not saying that's the tuition, that's the.
That because, upon looking at the history of the child programs at the LCOC, summer rec consistently ran greater than funded and used a lot of other operational to support. So one of my goals has been to identify and break out cost centers and programs in the LCOC. And as we look at doing that, I can tell you preliminary lead numbers this year for summer camp were pretty even. So although camp wasn't what people were used to, it's what was doable with the dollars we had. So that being said, I don't know what $12,000 we'll give you next year. Because next year salaries go up to $12 for every kid, and we had probably slightly overstaffed, but another grant funded that. But if you open it up and fund every Lubac kid, then we're going to have greater numbers of kids, and I'm going to need a bigger staff. And salaries this year were budgeted at about 34 and ran right about 34. So that's all I got to say at this moment tonight.
Do you have an inkling of how many kids are going to be there next year?
No, because like, to be perfectly honest, I don't know how many kids are in pre-K or kindergarten or, you know, I mean, I know, I know last year at the after-school program, between September and March and the end through May, because we got out of the CAC at that point, but we averaged like 9-point-something kids a week in the after-school program. Now, granted, that is working parents only and, you know, and it's not all the kids. But I don't know what the numbers are enrollment, but I understand the enrollment in school is only like 60-something. And that is sixth, seventh, and eighth graders that aren't going to be the right age to attend summer rec program. So I don't know what the numbers are for next summer. But I do know, on average, summer rec has cost somewhere between $40,000 and $50,000-something thousand dollars, depending upon how much money was spent on trips or whatever.
Yeah.
And the $75 came from purely nothing but an earlier discussion with me and my board stating that the previous charge didn't begin to address the cost, and we needed to do something. And I will add one more thing. Every person who put in a scholarship request got something. So if they didn't put it in, we couldn't do something about it. And I would understand the argument that people shouldn't have to put in, fill out paperwork, but I don't know how you give scholarships a sliding scale unless you ask people to tell you how much money they make. How else you do it?
I guess I got a question on this whole thing. The townspeople have already voted on this. Are we just going to keep bringing this up until something passes? I mean, 2 and 3, they've already voted on it.
No, 2 and 3 have to be on it because we have to appropriate the money to buy out of that act. When we voted not, when the town voted not to put in the $21,000 necessary for the alleged 20%, was it 25 or 20%? 25. 20 or 25? 20. 20% of the $425,000, which is what they're estimating the project's going to be now, that we had to put that aside for us to go forward with the state.
You know, the state is the one that's dragged their feet for two years at the beginning of this project. This year, they couldn't get any bidders.
I'm not going to propose that.
This is their baby, too.
I'm sure they want the sidewalk to be done.
But give me the information, because I will call these people. You guys will get a red dollar. I mean, plain and simple.
You're on it. So we're trying to, let's finish the discussion on Article 4.
I've been told, okay, I have the information for it.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
What's $75 on the study? You got a calculator there? Somebody has a calculator. Did you do that in your hands, Sonia?
No, I could give you.
Should I? How much?
No, that's not right. 75, 30?
Yeah.
Yeah, $2,250.
So if you have to.
20,000 must be 22,000.
But it's 75 a week. About 75 with table.
Oh, that's per week.
So you count that like six.
Yeah, times six weeks. 2250 times six weeks.
So where did the $12,000 come from?
It started with $6,000, and then it went to 10, and then when Kathy Arson came and added from six to eight weeks, they asked for 12, and then we said yes.
Yeah, the hope was it would assist in the extension of the program.
Yes, that's what 12 got.
And I think there's still another perspective here, that even at $75, if that's the number, quite frankly, even if it's $115, I think what needs to also be taught in summer rec or in the program is that a parent or someone involved in the program should be tickled pink beyond belief that their child can go to a summer camp for a week for $110.
No kidding.
And get fed and go on trips. So I think there's a learning curve in here as well that needs to be, I mean, this, again, it's just me. This is up to the taxpayers, but I'm sure all of us can pull up instances where like, wait a minute, you pay, your kid can go to a summer rec camp and they pay $75 a week? Or an after-school, after-school program for whatever it is?
35.
$35? I don't know where else you can go and get that in the country. So I think, I think there also needs to be a little educational learning curve on that as well.
Couldn't do that when I was a kid.
Yeah, but that's, yeah, I think it was $35 when I had to stay at the school in 1967 or something, so.
Man, you're old.
Yeah, I am. And I have all the hair to prove it. So, you know, and I just, so I just said, that's something also that I think the taxpayer needs to look at and understand. Not saying if they still think from a perspective of taxpayer money that they should go free, then that's fine, that's prerogative. I just think they should.
I think that the article was passed, and the reason why they stipulated sliding scale and scholarship fund is so that when the $12,000 ran out, then it ran out. But it was, yeah, I think that's asking the program, just Dana, between the board and Dana and Nancy, that that's a lot for a program to take on. I can understand not asking for financials and having maybe some kind of a break, especially if they're working.
See, but I understand how that works. I mean, everything in society we do is based on what you make and what you have and what you don't have.
Well, I lived in a community back when my kids were little, and the taxpayers paid for the summer camp, and if you dropped your kid off, it was free. So, but we had, you know.
That was also back with me. It's a little different now. I mean, now you've got to insure yourself for $5 million. And I can assure you, back when you and I went to camp, if you stuck a little knife in the electric socket, they went, oh, now you learn not to do it. Now you get sued for $12 million.
Well, the other thing is if you're going to ask the taxpayers to support the program and all the Lubac taxpayers go free, that Lubac children go free, then it needs to be in our budget, and it needs to be line item that the whole program is paid for, you know, for, you know, that all of it's paid for. We can't expect, and I'm going to defend LCOC on that, because if it's 30,000 to 50,000, 50,000.
40, 40,000.
40,000 to 50,000 for the program, and half of the, half of the children now are Lubac are, then we'd need to ante up 25,000.
Well, and then to your point, if every Lubac student will go free, I think your enrollment will go up.
Right, and then you.
Then you got to add more staff, and then you may get into a different bracket of insurance.
They have other money they get in other directions.
Right, but for us, you know, mandate as a taxpayer to allow, what money? They don't get any other money from the taxpayers.
No, but they have other money that went into that program.
But not from, not from Lubac taxpayers. And the argument was, that's why it was, it was limited to just the $12,000, that the sliding scale and scholarships would come out of just that money. And when you ran out of $12,000, then you ran out of scholarship funds.
Nancy, could you get some numbers?
Does that make a little more sense?
Could you get some numbers to show the folks how many people risked and sent $12,000? How many people it would send?
What's spent on that?
So, in a nutshell, I mean.
You missed, you missed the meaning.
I could probably, and I could, and I mean, my board meets in September, and, you know, we are finishing up, we finally got final bills and blah, 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 that's.
I'm just saying basic.
Yep, basic. But my only coffee huck would be, it depends on what you expect summer rec to be.
As it is.
Because I would, I would, when you and I went to summer rec and our town's paid for it, you went for three days in the town park, and you did things in the park. LCOC offered an outrageously expensive program that took kids on a lot of trips that really weren't funded in the budget, historically. So when we started looking at it realistically, we'd had some great trips this year. You know, we did the ferry over to Eastport, we went to Road Bluff, I can't even remember. We did like three of it, I can't remember. But we did it within a budget. And so I don't know what, you know, because I got lots of great comments about rec, and you'll get that in your report. And I also got less than complimentary thinking their kids should go to Fun Town, Fresh Town on our expense. So, you know, we have to be realistic in what a program can offer.[1726.52] And all I can tell you is seventy-five dollars for full daycare, that's what it was, eight to four-thirty. Nowhere else in the state of Maine did you get that for seventy-five dollars this year. And every person who requested a scholarship got it. So the majority of people did not even pay that. They paid fifty-two fifty or sixty dollars for their kids to go to camp all day with trips, breakfast, and lunch. So, um, I have to be guarded. And what I can tell you, twelve thousand dollars will get you next year because my payroll's going up.
Well.
Six thousand.
Really, your way has been passed already, restrictive enough. Like, I think this is even more restrictive.
But what I was just saying is, the way the program runs, not cutting anything with it.
Oh, okay. Well, I can tell you that after my September ninth meeting with my board and after I share all the numbers, and then I'll give you guys a report.
Just so you can show.
And it's probably a lot.
Well, but it would give us a, a baseline, you know.
But we, we need to make this decision tonight. So, I mean, I, I, I think I'm for the article as it stands. It's restrictive enough.
Yeah.
And to add, have another one, we, we really need to focus this more. This special town meeting needs to be focused on the sidewalk project.
Yeah.
It's why we called it. It's extremely important that I explain the downside of not going forward.
Yeah, yeah.
And I think this is gonna involve a lot of discussion that's already been discussed at the first meeting. And then if, that, Dana, you wanna present this article for the following.
No, I think that, just, just my guess is when the bill is settled at the end of the year, you probably won't even get the twelve thousand dollars. If you're basing this on seventy-five dollars and a number of kids, if there are not a large number of Ubec kids going, they're not gonna get that money. Am I understanding this right?
No.
This entire, that article that was passed was based on sliding scales and whatever. So there's gonna be some paid for it to justify every bill that comes up to this office to pay for that program. We'll see how much of that twelve thousand dollars.
It's gonna be how many, they're gonna sit there and it's a Ubec kid and they, and it's gonna be up to their program to decide whether they give them fifty percent off or ten percent or twenty percent. But each time they give a Ubec kid an appropriate sliding scale or a scholarship, it comes off the twelve thousand dollars.
That's right. But in the past, you've written one check and said, go ahead and put the program on. This article requires some paperwork to back up the sliding fee and whatever amounts it. And I would be surprised if you spend all twelve thousand dollars.
Well, uh.
Now, that, you go ahead and vote, or you don't even have to vote.
They've already voted on it.
I've done what I feel that I.
It's just, this is gonna cost, this, this article as written is gonna cost the program, I believe, a lot of money.
Mm-hmm.
A lot more money than the restriction that was already put on, which we can revisit next year.
My, my, uh, amendment at town meeting lost by two votes. You know, to have it just the way it's always been, they lost by two votes. I, I'm good. You guys go ahead and do whatever you want to.
Oh, we haven't voted yet. We're discussing it. Um, so we, the mo, there's a motion and second to keep, to put Article Four in the special town meeting.
I think we'll discuss this Wednesday. I think it'll be a half hour Wednesday.
We have to sign this tonight.
Okay, we'll sign it.
So, okay, you're not understanding me. We have two versions of the warrant. One with, one with Article Four and, and one not. Want the other article, the other warrant just has the articles about the sidewalk project.
And you can change Article Four.
So, um.
I'm for changing Article Four. As it was, it was put in at the last meeting.
Well, first, we have to make a motion to keep Article Four in as written. And then we can vote yes or no.
As written, the original?
As written right here. We have to make it, it's on the table.
Let me explain. If you do nothing with Article Four tonight, it stands as it was passed already. You don't, money at town meeting.
Yes. Oh, you mean with the line not in there? No, just.
Correct. It would be with, with the line not going through that.
Okay.
That's how it was passed, at town meeting. You're only voting, you're only deposing to vote on the stipulation to be changed. If you, if you liked how it was passed at town meeting, then you should remove Article Four from the warrant.
And it would go back to the original. Yes.
The original that was decided on.
You can just vote to have the two options. There's, there are two warrants there. You can vote just to accept the one without Article Four. I, I've done all I can do. You, you guys, you guys will be taking whatever heat comes from it from now on.
There's a third option, if I dare. You can leave Article Four in and still change the stipulations that were passed and just take out everything passed, what's bold and it says summer rec program. And it'll go back to the original way that it used to be voted on every year.
So you see if the town will vote to re-change the stipulations.
That's kinda preferred.
That's, okay, so there's five of us though.
Yeah.
So we have to do this the Robert's Rules of Order. Right now, we have to vote to keep it, we have to vote to keep our, to sign this warrant as written with the four articles as written. And we have to have a second, and then we have to vote on it. Once it's voted yea or nay, then we can go forward. So, make a motion that we.
So we're voting on all four of them right now?
We have to vote on the warrant as written. There's a second warrant we can, we can look at without Article Four that's been presented. You should have that one too.
No, I only give it.
Okay, so there's two warrants. There's one with Article Four and one without Article Four. Uh, I, I would suggest that people who want to alter Article Four should leave that up to the discussion that evening. If you want to leave it as it stands now, then I would remove it. I wouldn't, I don't think we should try to figure out what it should say. With the, with the town, you know, make a motion to, you want to alter it. I, 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 I called this special meeting after this whole, this whole sidewalk thing, which is huge for the town. So this to me is an awful lot of spinning for one year of decision.
Yeah.
Because all the program has to do is to give enough children scholarships, full scholarships, to reach twelve thousand, and they'll get their money.
Mm-hmm.
They'll just say, okay, it's the first twenty kids that come here, get free scholarships, and they'll, and they'll say, fine, and then you'll get your twelve thousand. So there's, there's no, there's no way that they're not gonna get their twelve thousand.
What happens, what happens to a Ubec resident who's the twenty-first kid?
Well, I guess they're out of luck.
I'll send them to you guys.
I'm just saying that, I'm just saying that, that there is not gonna be a point where you're not gonna be able, because you can, you can give better scholarships or better sliding scales, correct? To alter the twelve thousand, to use the twelve thousand.
Anything is a possibility, as well as looking at the cost of camp, as well as a lot of things. And that.
I will go to what I said in the beginning, which is I feel my, my opinion, which I stated at the last meeting, uh, that, but this, that being done, and that a Ubec resident has approached us with this article, I think the article should be in there for discussion. Bless your name.
Okay, so we'll make a motion to keep the article in the warrant as written. So we need a second, no need to vote. Doesn't matter who makes the motion, you can vote any way you want. So I'm making a motion that we accept this warrant with the four articles as written. We have a second?
Okay.
No second? Okay, so somebody else make a motion? I, I mean, I don't even want Article Four in there, so I don't know why I'm making the motion. But it, you have to do that for Robert's Rules of Order, so I, we're waiting for another motion.
So logically, the next motion is that Article Four is removed.
Apparently so.
Okay.
I, I, can I, can I just say, can I add something?
But I was willing to let it go to vote.
I think you actually don't have to do that. You, you, the, the motion died for lack of a second.
Yeah, which would be idiotic.
You can vote on the warrant with just the two articles. I, I believe in just one of the warrant, two articles. The, the.
I don't understand the whole procedure of voting. Because in order to get your vote heard, you had to have a second.
Everybody knows how I feel about. Everybody knows how I feel about two articles.
Yeah, well, we're not grunting about that.
I'm, I'm pretty sure you can just go on to your two articles. You, 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 the four articles, there.
So we now need another motion. Dan, did you make a motion?
No, I made the previous one, so I think I.
Which is what is that, I didn't read it?
It, it got left in the wind there.
Carol made that motion. Carol made a motion.
Yeah, I made that first one.
I made a motion, there was no second, which is, so it's done.
Oh, I thought that was me.
No. No.
I say we, we oughta wait on two and three too, until we do some research.
Okay, we need.
Because that's only next week. Well, you've got till next Wednesday to get your research done.
We have to have this before the commitment. We have to have any more.
We'll post that warrant tomorrow.
When, yes, we have to post it. When, when we agreed to not pay, when the taxpayers voted not to pay the twenty-one thousand, they were told that we had in a certain figure to appropriate to opt out of the money of the whole project. And this is the figure which I spent quite a long time gathering from the state and from the engineering firm. So this is the figure that will opt us out. We have to have it before the tax commitment.
It was my understanding.
So can we stick to whether we're putting Article Four in or out of the warrant? And then we'll discuss the next, the next thing. Let's do one thing in the Congress.
I, I think it's a problem there, Carol. If the motion died, it's.
Okay, so if the motion died, then we're going with it. Okay, so make a motion to have Article One, Two, and Three in the warrant, without Article Four.
Yeah, I, I make a motion that we have Article One through Three as stated.
Okay, second that. All in favor? And you voted, you didn't vote? You voted no?
Nope.
What did you devote, Sonya? Let's just.
I can call, you can call me.
Just the, just the warrant without Article Four. Just the one without the LCOC.
So, but we are gonna have a chance next Wednesday to discuss this. Because there's something I don't understand about the sidewalk project.
Well, well, we're gonna be able to.
There's something I can hear with you.
This is just to put in the warrant so that the whole town can discuss the sidewalk project again. The, this whiteboard.
We'll all know more about sidewalks than we care to know.
Well, we have more information next Wednesday so we can discuss it.
Well, Jason gets item, we, we will. I have a whole presentation of why we should or shouldn't do it. But I'm not gonna discuss it tonight because this has to be in there. I'll discuss it to the, in the town, at the town meeting. I will explain the downside of, of just buying out and raise, Jason wants to itemize, get the bills itemized as to what they spent it on. That's fine, and the, and the, um, I'm not gonna do it tonight. We just, this, I will do it at quick town meeting. It's complicated. We're gonna be down ninety-nine thousand dollars with no sidewalks.
And nothing's been done on that. They haven't touched that one.
Well, but they spent thirty-one thousand dollars getting rights away, and they needed a lot of right of ways. Everybody's, everybody's front yard was being affected, and that was legal work. And then it was twenty-nine thousand dollars of engineering, which they completed. And they didn't put, they put it out to bid, and they didn't put it out correctly. They put it out in Southern Maine in publications that nobody around here reads. They did it too late, and, um, in my opinion. And I think that it, now that we own the engineering, which is twenty-nine thousand, four hundred and fifty dollars or whatever of engineering worth it, the town should take over, over the bidding and see with local bidding that we can get the project way down because we still have, according to them, three hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars left in the construction phase. So if we can bring in the bidding way below that, we don't even need that much money set aside. We won't have to use it. Like, like when we built the garage, we didn't use twenty thousand of it. So we're kind of cutting up our nose to spite our face, opting out.
What may I add?
Because we've, we've lost all control of the project, yeah. Well, I mean, everybody's sitting there, they don't wanna bid it.
You're absolutely right, Carol. Yeah. And, and.
And I spent a lot of time on it.
The frosting on this cake is that it's not even a local road, it's a state road. Which is adding insult to injury.
Okay, but we entered into a contract.
Well, we voted at the big town meeting not to pay the twenty-one thousand.
Correct.
Twenty-one thousand is what we finished the project. Happening is they're throwing it back up again.
Well, no, they put two on, and that's just to save.
Well, is that where I am?
They need to know what the doubt, they don't even know how much they were gonna have to empty up. We didn't know the figures because we, we couldn't have known the figures. So we called to find out, um, how much the state had spent and how much it's gonna cost for them to buy to legally get out of all those right of ways. And that we won't, and we won't own them anymore. So, yeah, waste of money. It's the town's decision. Do you wanna throw away ninety-nine thousand and forget about it? Or do you wanna revisit the twenty-one thousand and take it out locally bidding and see if you want it stuff?
And if it passes, it appears, however they stand, girl.
And, and I think, and this is not to get too into the weeds. This state has continued to add monies on to what we started. And so I think there's that secret feeling like, what's to stop them from continuing to add more money that we're gonna be obligated to have? They're, we don't trust, basically.
Right now, they have moratorium on the whole thing. Nobody's spending any money on anything. I've told them, they're not gonna spend any money.
The easiest thing to do, because if you get two hundred and fifty thousand dollars.
Special marine warning.
The easiest thing to do is cut the size of the project down.
Yes.
And, you know, that's.
Cut the size of the project down so it doesn't cost.
I don't know, I guess.
So it doesn't cost the taxpayers anymore. Shrink the project down.
I think that's when you get your research done.
Sonya, did you go guess to keep this on the warrant so we could decide with the taxpayers?
Oh, yes.
So it's four to one? Okay.
All right. There we go.
Okay, so we have to sign it now.
While you're signing that, I'll just go over the next item. It's a safety grant application. I sent in to the MMA scholarships. We can submit things to help purchase and the public work, no, not public work. Waste Water Trip Plant needs a safety net installed at one of their, um, outflow stations. And it's like twelve hundred dollars, something like that. But we're hoping we'll get the scholarship to pay for that piece of equipment. So we, Bruce and I submitted that. That's just been on date.
Is this a nice place where I could say after reading that report to, once again, I know we do, but I hope the town understands what a great job that Bruce and the boys do.
Yes.
Uh, it was quite a lengthy, uh, investigation is not the right word, but.
Inspection.
Inspection of everything. And, um, as much as we know that the plant's lasted a lot longer than was even anticipated, and the fact that I thought the report pretty much spelled out to me, barring, you know, a couple Excel spreadsheet corrections, what a great job Bruce and the boys do.
Yeah, it's very important to have them.
I wanted to make sure that was out there for everybody to hear.
It'd be a lot more expensive to run that whole plant without, and, and what it's supposed to be paying.
I don't know if you can slash that one, from the record?
Yep. Maze Bridge, um, it is coming upon us. The project will begin August twenty-sixth, but the road won't be shut down until September seventh through the nineteenth, thirteenth, sorry. Which is oddly, the seventh is a Saturday, so I guess they're gonna be doing things on Saturday. But, um, you will be seeing these signs posted. I will sign them, I guess, on your behalf. Just be the DOT signs, but we'll just cross out Department of Transportation and all this. And we'll have public work post these. The DOT let us have these because we didn't have any of our own. We never.
What's, what's the road limit?
There are twenty-three thousand. Yep. And you guys have voted on that a while ago.
Well, not so much me, it's gonna affect the trusted folks. You know, God, it's a bit, he has to get up in there with a thirty-two thousand pound.
What type of days is he putting now? It's just one week, right?
Friday, Friday. Six, six working days, I guess, and that's seven.
It's only a week. It's only a week.
And he just has to go around, so.
Get in trash, that's it, yeah, from post, anyway. Trash and oil.
Yeah. Okay.
And when will the toll be completed on this?
They're hoping, well, the road is being.
That was a joke. Toll. The toll being.
Forty, forty, Dan.
Yeah. That overhead, don't wanna fool ya, it's, it's clicking your, uh, your speed pass there.
Okay, so the, let's go to the next thing. Water Street closure for pirates invasion. I had a long talk with Wanda, and they wanted to originally close it from the post office to the library. And since the farmer's market is there, that was not a good idea. I didn't feel on other, I canvassed other businesses on the street. And, um, they agreed to request closure from, um, Johnson Street, from the boat landing, but just above, so that the boats can get in, uh, to Main Street. And then cut off there where Tracy's usually there for the marathon, that one little section there, so that they have a place to do their invasion. And then we communicated with the school, and Tina's gonna let them use the soccer field for their games, And then we communicated with the school and Tina's gonna let them use the soccer field for their games and they're gonna use the cafeteria for their movie. So, this much is, so the closure request is only going to be from.
Open?
Well, not the, the top of the boat ramp because they have to still be able to launch their boats. So the top of the, so, so.
They're into the street, kinda.
Well, right there where Johnson Street is to Main Street, without stopping any traffic for Eric or anyone else.
To Main Street?
Yes, from, from Johnson Street to Main Street is where it's gonna be. And then from John, then from Water Street to Pleasant.
This will be open?
No, closed. So it's that, that L right, right by Co Hills. The one in front, the street in front of Co Hills and the street. And then that Pleasant's, the, the Johnson Street, where the benches are.
Yeah.
Yep.
That will be closed. That way the boats can still go down Pleasant around the corner and, and they can still get in the parking lot. You can't cut them off.
And this is Saturday, what time?
Oh, I don't know, we didn't get to the time, but I'm thinking invasions at nine, so they wanna close it probably.
What's the date on that?
It's gonna be thirty first.
That's the thirty first.
That's our date of invasion.
Well, yes, well, we don't.
At eleven.
Eleven.
That's eleven.
I would say it doesn't have to be closed till eleven, but, you know.
Boat races are sometimes, I think eleven.
I don't, I don't know anything about boat races.
Eastport?
No, yeah, they've got a scheduled event.
Yeah, but that has nothing to do with the road closure of Water Street.
I would think like eight.
I don't know, a couple of works doesn't work on Saturdays and they're probably gone for the weekend. So I'll just have them, I'll speak with Lorna about them leaving off the barricades and I'll just have to put them in.
Yeah, they're gonna have to put the barricades in. So we, I'll make a motion that we allow the Pirates Invasion to close the street from eight to eleven, something like that, in that area.
Yeah.
And then after eleven, I think they.
Second that in the area.
Yeah, any time, right? All in favor?
Yeah.
Okay.
Aye, ooh, I.
Aye.
R L F C D?
I didn't get a R.
I've been watching TV, TV programs.
So much.
What's going on with the R L F C D?
Okay, uh, the R L F board would like to move fifty thousand into a C D at, at Bar Harbor, that's their work for it.
Okay. So the, the signers on the R L F count will be myself and Dan and Suzette. So, that was, we need a motion. Rachel, want to do a motion?
Sure, so move that we, uh, okay the movement of an R L F to the C D.
Second?
I will second that.
All in favor? Flat. Someone in the town came and asked us to, uh, give Everett a flat because of all his hard work.
Oh, love.
And Renee got a flat designed and we have a price of, reasonable price of under fifty dollars. And we'd like to have this flat made for Everett.
Oh, yeah.
Do we have a motion and a second for that?
Motion, two, second.
Second, all in favor?
Yeah, he's leaving, um, Saturday, I think.
But we can mail it to him.
Yeah.
We have his mailing address, right? Okay. Uh, share us memorandum of, of understanding?
This is, uh, for the five thousand dollars that was passed at town meeting for the extended coverage. This is gonna cover twenty-seven weeks, four hours a week, and they will not go over the five thousand dollars.
Okay, so I'll make a motion that we accept the memorandum of understanding and we allow Renee to sign the agreement.
Sure.
Second.
All in favor? Oh, sand beds.
Your lethal weapon.
Sand beds. Sand beds and paving. So, uh, for paving, we had a pre-construction mandatory, pre-construction meeting. There was one bed that came in, uh, one person that, uh, one company that represented this county concrete.
Okay, and. The bed is twenty thousand for South Street, Hobson Street, five thousand, North Quebec Road, ninety thousand. What about the, the paving down there in Water Street?
Uh, that might be, uh, for another time.
We're gonna have that hole in Water Street for.
Isn't that the water, wasn't that what they're supposed to pass it?
Not, I, I don't know, but that's been there all summer.
We'll be, that'll be fixed. They'll be fixing that and the, the place on school that was fixed from there. This is what's on the docket for right now.
I make a motion we accept that bed.
Second, all in favor? Wanda, we just passed your article that we would close in front of Co Hills and to the left there, that L where the benches are, from eight to eleven-ish, because we didn't know what you wanted to close for.
Thank you so much.
So you can change that time a little bit.
Yeah.
And that Renee's gonna let you have the, the barricade to set up and, um, and also maybe they could use about four cones. Do we have, own any cones?
Uh, Marathon Committee might have a couple.
Yeah, but they're down at the school. Wanda already said we could use them, but it's easier if public works.
Yeah, the boys have. Oh, if the boys have.
Yeah, the boys, because the cones, the cones are really, yeah, barricades are sort of ones that you can follow them, but.
We appreciate, thank you, boys.
They're all good. Okay, now you're, you're, just in time to be appointed.
Well, if my weight's on, hold on.
Okay. Sand beds first, we want. I must have any shants in here and stuff. Good grief. Just one of those little Chinese dolls.
This is like, you know, this is.
You don't wanna get any sand in there.
A very good, but, oh, no, I need to bring one. Doesn't work. It's not strong enough. It's not strong enough.
Ooh, look at her with her little batons.
This one is from H and S. Nine ninety per cubic yards for twenty-five hundred cubic yards of sand. The winter road maintenance to be screened, three-eighths to the inch unless it's described and the advertising forbids sand will be free from vegetable and organic matter. That's the first step for that. Here's a certificate of liability and.
How much was it?
Nine ninety per cubic yard.
Nine dollars and a half?
Yeah. All right, let's do the pictures. This is from Tobias Company and their price per cubic yard is nine dollars. Tobias Company's providing a firm proposal for supplying the town of Quebec with twenty-five hundred yards of winter sand. So we didn't have a how much, but I guess it's whatever nine ninety is for twenty-five hundred. Our sand is screened at, at three-eighths or less, we guarantee our sand to be clean, hard, durable, sharp particles. To be clean, hard, durable, sharp particles. I'm sure that's right. And free from vegetable or organic. Is also lump-free and free of any clay or other de, de, the, I don't even know that. Okay, grandma, what grammar there. Can you read that word, delirium or something? That's it, two. But I don't know about the hard, the sharp particles. I think that was written, free of sharp particles.
Oh, deleterious subjects, substances.
That's what the ad read.
That's garbage.
Yeah.
Well, I know last year they all said it was the best sand they ever had.
The bias?
Yeah.
Last year's sands. And they said that it was the best quantity they ever had. So I will make a motion we accept H and S's data, nine ninety.
I would second that.
There was ten twenty-five last year.
Yeah, it came down.
On down, yeah.
Okay, all in favor? That's four to, four to one.
Four to one?
Okay, we're down to appointment papers. Sorry, they're down there somewhere, I think they are.
That's the whole group of women. If you want to make the motion, put this list, or yours.
Yeah, um, we'll make a motion to appoint, I'll just read the committees. Let's all, this, this has to be appointed as well. All of these. So, if you have a list of all the appointments, we have to appoint Renee Town Clerk, Sonya Bailey Selectman, Jim Clark Assessor, Renee Gray, Director of Emergency Management, Carol Dennison, Deputy Director of Emergency Management, Rachel Rubier, do you wanna stay on, Director of Emergency Management?
Sure. Or an emergency.
You're running. She's the first one going.
Arlene Gilpatrick.
That's your edge, is that what?
Helped Officer Bobby.
Yeah, but not from the seventh to the thirteenth of September.
That's right.
She'll never get out of there.
Well, I, I'd like to appoint Rachel and/or Dan as well, so then in case you're not available. And you, because you, you were pretty good one, you're Dan. I'm, well, yeah, I am. But if I'm not here, I'd like to have you, Rachel and Dan do it, so.
Because we, also we're in town, like heavy weather or that kind of thing.
Robert, Bobby Hood Fire Chief, Randy Hall Assistant Fire Chief, Errol Tinker Fire Assistant Fire Chief, Debbie Hood Agents of the Overseers of the Force, Suzette Francis Deputy Agent of the Overseer of the Force, William Cor, Board of Peels, William Corey, Wanda Matthews, Denise Rule, Nancy Bailey, Peter Boyce, Deborah Holmes, Sharon Yates, well, Planning Board. Deborah Holmes, Sharon Yates, Rhonda Welkum, Cecil Moore, Gary Rhodes, Old Enforcement Officer, Rita Rhodes, Rowlet Clerk, Suzette Francis Treasurer Tax Collector, Rhonda Welkum Animal Control, Troy Tinker Deputy Animal Control. Really? Yes?
He works, yeah.
Is he still? Joanne Case Washington County Emergency Medical Service Director, Bobby Hood Alternate Washington County Emergency Medical Service Director, Jason Navacius Marion Transfer Station Board Directors, Rachel Rubier Transfer Station Board Directors Alternate, Washington County Council Governments, Rachel Rubier, Carol Dennison Alternate, Ralph Dennison Harbor Master, Sonya Bailey, A O X Ad-Hoc Committee, Dan Wagner Ad-Hoc Committee, Ellen Case and Wanda Matthews. Okay, Shellfish Committee Amanda Lyons, Joseph King, Josh Lyons, Sonya Bailey and James Shell, no. You don't mean the one, I need to know. James? You can't do it. Cross that off, you can't do it. Safe Harbor Julie King, Mike Scovani, Josh Lyons, Bart Sletto, Peter Boyce, Carol Vince Moore, Carol Dennison. Resizing Committee Kenny Morris, Jason Navacius, David Aldrich, Rachel Rubier, Denise Rule, Michael Scovani. Is he saying, you said no to Michael Scovani?
Uh, yeah, I think he, didn't he resign, uh?
Yeah, I believe he did.
Uh, last, yeah, yeah.
Arbor Committee Wiki Wright, Sean Karikoff, Gray McConnell, Peter Boyce, Jason Navacius. Revolving Loan Committee Suzette Francis, Renee Gray, Cecil Moore, Michael Scovani, William Corey, Dan Wagner, Peter Boyce. Economic Development Committee Rachel Rubier, Rhonda Welkum, Denise Rule, Renee Gray. We could use a few more people on the economic. She wants joint.
Yeah.
Oh, and Nancy Harrison. Economic Development. Did you read that?
I did agree.
Okay. Do we, did you know when you're, when you're here, you get appointed?
You want anymore?
And then Town Celebration Committee, Wanda Matthews, Shirley Brown. Really need three, you really try to get five people on the committee. I know, you just, we'll get you some bone hooks, it'll work.
You do have a couple more. That Andrew guy that does the horseshoes.
Yeah, Andrew and, uh.
Do you have any others we can name?
Danny Fitzsimmons.
So we'll have to add them, we don't have one on the pile tonight. All right, so I make a motion that we accept all these appointments. We have a second, all in favor? So we have, only need three signatures on each one, so. So why don't we, you know, pass that down to Sonya, have her start at that end. Because we only need three signatures on.
Okay.
So we have a lot of, a lot of them, so.
What's going on?
Just start signing.
Just sign the top, just sign every.
Start signing.
And then hand it to Jason.
We don't talk, right?
Soon as you get to three, go to the next one.
Soon as I do three, I go to the second one, Dan, is that what you're saying?
Doesn't matter, just sign anywhere, Sonya. We just need three selectmen on these because there's a lot of them.
While you're signing, I'll talk about my last, um, item. I was contacted.
You have to sing for us, Renee? Give us a little music.
I was contacted today by Crystal Pitchings from the Washington County Council of Governments.
Oh.
And she's asking that the Board of Selectmen sign this memorandum of understanding between the town and the W C C G regarding bike signs. And she's also emailed me, uh, pictures of where these signs are gonna be. Apparently the D O T requests that a town approve of these signs. So the only requirement that we have is that if we see that a sign is knocked down or missing, that we notify the cog and they are main, they are completely maintaining them.
Because we want to put this on.
Who maintains the West Quadi sign when you're heading out of town that tells you to turn left and then go back? Because that's like a hand.
If anybody sees my, that I sign mine, I have, someone else has to sign it. We need another signature. You know, if you sign your own appointment paper, we'll need four, is what I'm trying to say. Right, Renee?
Yeah.
Well, okay, so here's mine. I can't sign this, well, it's mine, so. Dan. Oh, I can't sign this one. So if you sign yours, you're gonna have to get someone else to sign. I can't sign Ralph's either. What, what? Oh.
A little bit of public discussion over there.
Do you want me to, I have to call the camera?
No. I'm gonna have to concentrate.
No, I'm sorry, my name. I better add my name.
So Jason, these, yours are coming up here, so don't sign. Uh, Dan, did you read that you didn't sign yours?
I have.
Oh.
I, I actually saw mine, so. Jason's, yours are coming around, so. Actually, you don't, you won't get it because there's three of us. But he won't have an opportunity to sign his by accident anyway. Jason, Cheryl isn't doing it, so we need this one.
I can actually make one for Dan, he's at Simmons right now for the celebration. I just wait up.
Don't, I'll tell him.
This is a good one.
Well, what, Dan?
He doesn't sleep with anyone. Right. Did you, anybody, did you happen to make a mistake and sign your own later?
I haven't seen my name yet.
Now, everyone who's been appointed has ten days to come up and sign in, so. It's up to the chair of the committee to get their committees up here to be sworn in.
Not completely true, that's more for elected or officials that are appointed, but not little committees like this, doesn't matter. I've actually checked in on you.
Oh, so they don't have to be ten days.
Right.
But you know what, if we don't say that, it would be suggestive if they come in ten days. Nancy, here's yours right here.
Yeah.
Wait out works wonders.
Go in.
Who's yours, Jason? So you don't need to do this.
No.
And I've got three.
I got a bunch for you.
Oh, do you really? Yes, you're the one in the metal, Rachel.
I know.
Hand me some, I'll sign those. I'll sign some for Rachel. Yeah, these are all signed.
That's right, here, you two.
Well, which one, you can't, you sign it's Rachel, she can't sign those.
This one, this one should be signed, that's why I picked that.
I didn't think of that. I don't have anything signed. This one's okay. So. Okay, here, do it, thumbs up. My name is starting to look the worst, hey? Here's Wanda's. Here's Wanda's, are you on two committees?
Yeah, I'm on the planning board.
Wanda, did you know that you and Mary Ann were the best friends?
If these were in alphabetical order, they're.
They're the Board of Appeals, right?
Yeah.
Yes, they were.
Well, they're not. And now, we've totally scrambled them up. That's sorry.
My gosh, my gosh. If they've got three, that's all we need, right?
As long as the person on it's.
As long as you didn't sign your own.
I did not.
You wanna double check?
I am.
Okay.
Thank you.
I'm gonna press some down here.
Uh, you can sign that one, because I can't.
Damn.
I'll sign it here.
Okay, my, my, my signature will be deteriorated, obviously.
So what's this to be? You can take them back, is that right?
Yes, right. Let me just, I'll take these.
Here you go.
You just motioned to have these signed, that's never any.
Yeah.
Those are all the motions.
These are.
This is for the bike signs.
They're all good.
Oh, I get, we need a mo, a motion for Renee to sign the bike sign agreement with.
I would make a motion that Renee sign the bike sign.
I will second that.
All in favor? Oh, this. Oh, this one only has two signatures, because I couldn't sign it. Uh-huh.
All right.
Okay, here, this is gonna be signed. This is gonna be signed.
These, these are good.
Sonya, did Sonya do it?
Yep.
Okay, just make sure Sonya didn't sign her own, let me check that. Rachel, Carol and Dan, now we're good.
Yeah, those are good.
Okay, here's a, check the.
Good job.
The volume counter. Have a comment?
I would like to tell everybody that next Wednesday, before the town meeting, at four o'clock, we will have members of the Pioneer Broadband Committee come in and talk about fiber optic broadband here. To anybody who would come, and hopefully, all of you people out in TV land, is she signing? Come.
So we'll advertise, advertise information at four o'clock.
They will explain broadband in, in the most technical terms, which of course, as everybody knows, I can't do it. And I would like to include in that group since I've got.
And here you go, you can hold this on TV, that's your, that's your, your thing.
I, I would like to invite Treskett Lighting, all the unorganized territories, um, and actually East Machias, who would like to be included with us, because we're becoming very inclusive. Here you go. This'll go up on the Quadi TV. Thank you so much. I would like to move that we adjourn if there's something else.
I will second that.
Okay, all in favor?
I want you to, the pin, is it a holder?
Yes.
I have not taken care of glasses.
This is, um, Renee, this goes to.
How's it going? One, two, three?
No, no.
Oh, you don't, it's so. So.